Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Regular Council Meeting. Item number one is Call to Order. Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. I now like everyone who's able to, willing to stand, to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. I'd like everyone who's able to remain standing for the Police and Fire Honor Guard to post the colors, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can we please, before we move on, give a big round of applause to the Police and Fire Honor Guard this evening? All right. Next up, I'd like to do an introduction of guests and dictators. If you're able and willing to stand when I call your name, I would love to have that happen. First of all, we have Tempe Union High School District Governing Board Member Andres Barazza, LD-12 State Representative Patty Contreras, the Honorable Shanna and Todd Pearson, Shanna Ellis, I should say, the Honorable Vice Mayor OD Harris from the city of Chandler, the Honorable Pam Garamkin, Tempe Elementary School District Governing Board Member Jim Lemon, the Honorable Hugh Hallman, Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community President Martin Harvier, Constable Karen Lathan, the Honorable Andy Shakurshin, Tempe Elementary School District Governing Board Member Monica Trejo, Kyrene School District Governing Board President Kevin Walsh, the Honorable Linda Spears, Honorable Michelle Hirsch, and the Honorable Jevon Hodge, and good night, everyone! All right, and we're back. Exactly. All right, next up here, we are going to go to item number five, Oath of Office. And this is the swearing-in ceremony for the council members and myself and our newly-elected council member. So I'm gonna go ahead and go down. I know Kara, our city clerk, is gonna get set up. And I would like to see if I could have my father join me up front. I just want to note, too, before I go down, for those tonight taking your oath of office, Councilmember-elect Amber, this is gonna be your first official act for your term. All elected officials, public officers in the state of Arizona are required to take a solemn oath, not to any individual or small group, but to the community as a whole and the laws governing your duties and obligations entrusted to you by the voters. So with that said, I will come on down.
Thank you. It is my honor, Mr. Mayor, to administer your oath for your new term of office as city of Tempe mayor. Please raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me. I, Cory Woods, do solemnly swear
I, Cory Woods, do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona
and the charter codes and ordinances of the city of Tempe
and the charter oaths and ordinances of the city of Tempe
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and defend them against all enemies
and defend them against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
and that I will faithfully and impartially
and that I will faithfully and impartially
discharge the duties of the office of the mayor
discharge the duties of the office of the mayor
and and for the city of Tempe
and for the city of Tempe
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations. So the next to take their oath of office is Councilmember-elect Nikki Amber. It is my honor, Councilmember-elect Amber, to administer your oath for your term of office as city of Tempe council member. Please raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me. I, Nikki Amber, do
I, Nikki
yeah, do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona
and the charter codes and ordinances of the city of Tempe
and the charter codes and ordinances of the city of Tempe
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and defend them against all enemies
and defend them against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
and that I will faithfully and impartially
and that I will faithfully and impartially
discharge the duties of the office of council member
discharge the duties of the office of council member
and and for the city of Tempe
and and for the city of Tempe
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations. Next up is Councilmember Garland. It is my honor, Councilmember Garland, to administer your oath for your new term of office as city of Tempe council member. Please raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Doreen Garland, do solemnly swear
I, Doreen Garland, do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona
and the charter codes and ordinances of the city of Tempe
and the charter codes and ordinances of the city of Tempe
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
that I will bear true I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and defend them against all enemies
and defend them against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
and that I will faithfully and impartially
and that I will faithfully and impartially
discharge the duties of the office of council member
discharge, discharge the duties of council member
and and for the city of Tempe
and and for the city of Tempe
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities
so help me God
so help me God.
congratulations. Last, but certainly not least, Councilmember Keating. It is my honor, Councilmember Keating, to administer your oath for your new term of office as city of Tempe council member. So please raise your right hand and you have your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Randy Keating, do solemnly swear
I, Randy Keating, do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona
and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona
and the charter codes and ordinances of the city of Tempe
and the charter and codes and ordinances of the city of Tempe
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and defend them against all enemies
and defend them against all enemies
foreign and domestic
foreign and domestic
and that I will faithfully and impartially
and that I will faithfully and impartially
discharge the duties of the office of council member
discharge the duties of the office of council member
and and for the city of Tempe
and for the city of Tempe
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God.
congratulations. So if the mayor and the three council members would like to join down here to officially sign your oaths of office, so then it's official. And some photo ops, we have certificates of elections here, too. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Very different. All right, that moves us here to item number seven, Election of Vice Mayor. I will look to see if anyone has a motion for the election of the next vice mayor.
I have a motion.
Yes, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, I have a motion for Doreen Garland to be the next vice mayor.
Okay, it's been moved. Second.
Well, are we supposed to say something? We used to say something.
We can. So, okay, so it's been, it's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Now, any discussion that you'd like to offer, please? You have a plea?
All right, yeah, sure. We used to say something, I swear, I didn't just make that up. You know, I just want to congratulate Councilmember Garland. We've had the opportunity to get to know each other over the last eight years, and I jokingly call her Tempe's grandmother because she's universally loved by all that meet her, and she brings her own milk to drink to events. She's one of the most wholesome, genuine people that I know, and I know she's a woman of faith who, the metta faith often guides her decisions and leads her to places where she may not have ended without that. So I congratulate you, Councilmember Garland, on your soon-to-be election to vice mayor. I know you'll do a great job, as you have done on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Keating. All right. Any other comments? We can go later. Yeah, I was gonna, okay. With that said, then, I've got a motion from Vice Mayor Adams and a second by Councilmember Keating. I will do a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Hodge.
Aye.
Councilmember Keating.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Amber.
Aye.
Councilmember Garland.
Aye.
Councilmember Chin.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That passes unanimously, seven to zero. Congratulations, Vice Mayor Garland. With that said, now we're gonna do something that's a little bit fun here. We are going to change up the order on the dais a little bit, so folks are gonna stand up and take their new seats. And Councilmember Hodge is gonna sing game show jingles, so. I feel like I should, I should stand, just to stand.
Oh my goodness gracious, I get to poke you now.
Nikki, I took my candy, so I gotta give you back yours.
Do we need WD-40 in the audience, by chance? Look at that. Well done, Mike. Kara, thank you. Thank you so much, which means we're gonna turn now to item number eight, Mayor and Councilmember Comments. This evening, I'm gonna start first with Vice Mayor Garland.
I pushed the wrong button. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor, for nominating me, I appreciate that. Thank you, Randy, for second. Thank you, everybody, for your, your votes. Get over here. I just wanna say, this is, this is a little emotional being here today. I know this is the second time I've been sworn in, but the first time that I was sworn in, I was sitting in my office at home by myself with a computer screen sitting in front of me. So just the feeling of being up here in the front with all of you out here, it, there's, it just warms my heart. It just feels different. So thank you so much for everybody for being here. And I've said this many times before, that it takes a village to raise a council member, and there's a lot of people in my village that are out here that have helped me these last four years, past mayors, past council members, friends. So thank you so much for, for supporting me for the last four years. I wanna say thank you to my campaign manager, Nancy's, there she is, there's Nancy, Nancy Puffer, and my campaign team, thank you so much for everything that you did. The residents, our friends that hosted parties and knocked on doors and attended events. There's no way that I could be up here, any of us could be up here. We can't run a campaign by ourselves. So thank you so much for the time that everybody has put in there. And I just also want to say thank you to my council colleagues and to the mayor. It's been a great last four years, and I cannot wait for the next four years. So again, thank you from the bottom of my heart. You know, my, my parents raised four of us kids, and I will say, it's Diana, Doreen, David, and Darlene. And my brother David is here, and they raised all of us with the value of service and giving back to the community and looking out for other people, being kind. And I hope that in the last four years, that along with reading hundreds and hundreds of pages for our council meetings and meeting with residents, that I've been able to impart some of those values that my parents have shared with us about being a good person and a good citizen and taking care of each other and looking out really for what's best about the community, because we are all in this community together. So I just wanted to say again, I told the mayor, we're gonna, I was gonna keep this short, so again, I just want to say thank you again to everybody who is here, your support, to our residents of Tempe who have trusted me the last four years and have brought us back for another four years. So thank you. My door's always open, I've said that many times, please come and visit with me, I love to go out and get coffee. But thank you again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Garland. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some people I'd like to thank as well. Starts with former Mayor Hugh Hallman, former Mayor Neil Giuliano, former Mayor Harry Mitchell, former Mayor Mark Mitchell. Mayor Woods, of course, thank you for all your friendship and support over the years, you were tremendously helpful during this last campaign, and as always, anything I can ever do for you, you know that I will. Councilmember Garland, I said we had eight years together, but we only had four. It seems like eight, though, doesn't it? Well, we'll blame it on COVID. So as Councilmember Garland mentioned, we, you know, we had, we did swearing-in online last year, so I kinda forgot how this went. So I didn't bring my own Bible holder, so thank you, Councilmember Hodge, for stepping up to do that for me. Councilmember, Councilmember Amber. I almost said elect there. You know, we had known, we probably known each other since 2010, but we really never had the opportunity to work closely together until this last campaign, and it was a pleasure getting to know you as we worked together. You know, just your work ethic and your passion for the city came through in the campaign you ran, so I'm definitely looking forward to serving with you for the next four years. So congratulations to you. I'd like to thank Eric Chalmers, of course, who had to take way too many nervous calls from me and totally didn't let me know that he was annoyed by those calls. I'd like to thank Allied Youth, Jason Hodge, Ron, and Detrel, who are in the audience today for all their work that they did to support the campaign. They were instrumental not only getting me on the ballot, but making sure I was hitting my numbers that Eric and my next person to thank, Janet Hamlin, expected me to hit. So Janet, thank you very much. You know, Janet and I didn't really know each other before this campaign, but much like Councilmember Amber, we got to know each other, and that's one of that relationship that I very much value now. I'm glad that we had the opportunity to work together. Joanne Marcus, an old friend, once born to the breach, thank you for all your help. I'm glad of the outcome, and you certainly played a large role, and I'm very appreciative of that. I'd like to thank Mark Hardness and Christian Barron and Bill Ruiz for their support. It was a tough fight at times, and having them in my corner really helped mitigate a lot of what could have been, I guess, right? So I'd like to thank the professional firefighters of Arizona, as well as the Arizona Police Association, as well as the Tempe Chamber of Commerce for, once again, you know, being in my corner. This is my third election in which I've enjoyed their support, and it meant a lot to me that they stuck with me through this last campaign, which I don't need to tell all you, was a little bit spirited at times. And certainly, last but not least, my girlfriend Melanie Garza in the front seat there had no idea that she would have some sort of official role in this meeting today, but I'm sure she's thrilled. Yeah, I met her in, geez, I don't wanna say the month now, 'cause I'll get it wrong and I'll have to hear about it forever. But it, but it was, it was early last year, and, you know, it's always fidgety, you know, I'm on my phone, I'm checking Twitter, I'm checking Facebook, getting all angry, you know, and she's like, "What's wrong with you?", you know? And I was like, "Well, we got a big election coming up in May, I got all this election anxiety, I'm sure when that's over, things will be fine." Narrator, they were not fine. So she had to deal with, you know, for the first year of knowing me, really just kind of a state of agitation and anxiety that we all know builds and builds and builds throughout the course of an election. So, you know, she stuck with me, and I'm sure she was just as glad as I am that, that we moved on. And she really got a really good joke on me one time when we first met, I should have said this earlier, but. And I was like, well, we got a big election coming up in May. I got all this election anxiety. I'm sure when that's over, things will be fine. Narrator, they were not fine. So she had to deal with, you know, for the first year of knowing me, really just kind of a state of agitation and anxiety that we all know builds and builds and builds throughout the course of an election. So, you know, she stuck with me, and I'm sure she was just as glad as I am that we moved on. And she really got a really good joke on me one time when we first met. I should have said this earlier, but the first night we met, we were chit-chatting a little bit on our way out the door. She's like, well, good luck on that Jedi Council or whatever. Only a year later, she's holding the plaque, right? So thank you, everybody, that came here tonight. Thank you, everybody, that cared enough for the Tempe not only to participate in the election, you know, vote, show up tonight. Our city is driven by those who show up. The trajectory of the city, I firmly believe our brighter days are still ahead of us. Tempe is not a city on the decline. It's not a city that is mismanaged. It's a city that people love to be in, and we see that time and time again through our residents' polls. And I'm very excited to continue to work with this council and our new city, well, newer city manager, and our staff to make sure that Tempe continues its upward trajectory. So I'm very pleased. And again, I thank you all, and I hope we have something. We definitely have something to celebrate tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Next up, Councilmember Amber.
Yeah, this is a pretty long list of people that I'm going to be thanking, because it's been a process, put it that way. I'd like to thank my husband Jerry and my four kiddos, Julian, Tyler, Blake, and Jessica, for all their support. They walked on doors, walked, they knocked on doors, so many doors for me. You know, the two younger ones driving me around as I knocked on doors. And I got to say, like, knocking on doors and talking to strangers is not in any other wheelhouse. So Tyler, I am so incredibly impressed with you. You have come so far. She used to not be able to, like, order whenever you would go through a drive-through. It would freak her out a little bit, but she went, knocked on doors, talked to complete strangers. So I am so proud of her. I'm grateful that you put all of your fears aside and did anyway. Vice Mayor Adams, her wife Cindy, Jerry, my kids. I want to thank you for talking me into running. I have been asked for the last 30 years to run for office, and my answer has always been, oh, heck no. Why on earth would I want to put myself through that? I am much more, you know, my wheelhouse is a lot more being a political staffer and being that person like Eric and Paul, you know, the person behind the person running and telling them what to do and telling them why they're not doing it correctly. So I really thank you for all of your confidence and it's in me. My mom and my dad, Diana and John, this party was going to be hard to get through, they're in wavering support for me in pretty much every direction I've ever taken in my life, both professionally and personally. I wouldn't be up here without everything you've done for me in the past 51 years. And yes, I just added myself to my age. And even though my dad's no longer here with us, I know he's up in heaven looking down. He's very proud of his, you know, favorite daughter. I'm the only daughter as well. My lovely campaign committee ladies, Angie, Margaret, Pam. Had any of you told me no when I asked you to be on my campaign committee, I'm not sure that I actually would have run. So I'm very, very grateful for all of your support, your early support, and I thank you for your years of unwavering friendship. I definitely would not be up here without of your guidance. Sherry and Angelica, I'm going to call the two of you out, because they seriously braved the heat, storms. They went out every Saturday and Sunday morning. Sherry, like me, missed college football last fall, which is very difficult for us, because we're LSU Tigers, which is like a real football team. So, yeah, we missed football last year. Oh, well, you know what? SEC, what can I say? Thankless work. I couldn't have crossed the finish line without you guys. And, you know, I'm going to give Angelica a lot of kudos. She liked it so much, she actually came and worked for the city. She is now my city council assistant. So she is out there in the audience, so thank you very much. My campaign manager, Paul, is here with his handsome husband Darren and his two little girls. Actually, one of his little girls came out and walked on doors with me, too. I think that was Paul's best open door rate, was whenever we had his daughter with us. I couldn't be up here without your guidance, your occasional kick and my tush. And again, thank you to your husband and your two beautiful daughters for loaning me to you for five months. And I'm going to also wish you luck in the next four or five months. He is also running Joel Navarro's campaign for County Board of Supervisors. And everybody that opened up their homes and held a house party for me, Shannon and Todd, Mika, Bill, Gail, and Mel, Kara and Matt, Angie and Hannah, Sharon and Marnie, Jody and Chad, Nick and Lori, your help and support are greatly appreciated, and I really had a lot of fun with you guys. And to everyone that actually did go out and walk on doors with me, Janet, Lane, Kim, Jordan, Peter, Joe, my two very favorite Nikoles, your willingness to put yourself out there made a huge difference, you know. And finally, to my colleagues sitting up here with me, I am so humbled by your acceptance. You guys have just been so fantastic, I would say, in the last six months. I'm really looking forward to working with all of you and helping keep Tempe moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Amber. Next up, Councilmember Adams.
I thought it was all about the news, the elected officials. Well, I want to congratulate everyone that was elected and reelected to council, and I'm really excited about our next chapter and having some new energy up here. And I think it'll be a really good fit for all of us on council. Congratulations to Vice Mayor Dorian Garland on your election to Vice Mayor. So that's awesome. And just really just want us to move forward. I know we're going to. It's important to me that we work together and resolve issues. I like to solve problems. I'm that kind of person. I can't stand things being left unattended or out in wherever, left field, right field, whatever field it is. I just want things to be done. And I want to thank our city manager, Rosa Nchosty, for getting things done. It's been really a smooth transition with Rosa, and I know I drive her crazy sometimes, like, well, when's that happening? When's it happening? So patience probably is not my virtue, but I really appreciate working with you and the whole team. Congratulations to Nikki. I was glad to talk you into running, and you're going to be a great council member. And so I'm super excited about that. And then to Randy. Randy and I, we have a good time up here together, and I'm looking forward to working with him. And of course, Birdetta Hodge. I mean, it goes without saying that she's a really close friend and colleague to me, and she gives me good advice, and I think I give her okay advice. And so, yeah, thank you. So I'm just really happy to be up here with a new team, and I'm looking forward to getting a lot done. And thank you so much. Great to see so many people in the audience, so many friendly faces, and I love it. So thanks for coming down tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Woods, Vice Mayor Garland, Councilmember Keating, Councilmember Amber. Congratulations on your reelections and election. I'm so very honored to sit amongst you and to serve our community. I think if you see any tussles up here, apparently it's going to be about college football moving forward. I look forward to this next chapter in working with our staff, our wonderful staff in the city. And again, congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
Okay, thank you. You know, I usually don't read off a paper, but I wanted to say something special. But I have to say a quick special, thank you, Councilmember Chin, for warming my chair. First off, I want to extend a warm welcome to our newly elected council member, Nikki Amber. Congratulations. Our mayor, Cory Woods, on your reelection. And of course, welcome back my reelected colleagues, Vice Mayor Garland and senior council member, Rhett Keating. That's debatable. I'm honored to be with all of you. As we come to serve our community, I'm reminded of a quote by Helen Keller, "Alone we can do so little; together we can do so much." It is simply yet powerful reminder of the strength and lies in our unity and teamwork. Now, speaking of teamwork, I once heard someone say that teamwork is essential, because it allows us to blame someone else. But it's also seriousness. We know that teamwork is about backbone of active leadership and especially time and turbulence. This past year has been a roller coaster of challenges and unexpected turns, and yet we show resilience and adaptability. It reminds me of another quote. This is one of John Sternbeck, "A journey is like a marriage. There are certain ways to be wrong is to think that you're in control. You can't always control the circumstances, but you can control how we respond to them. And we have done such that with grace and determination." Rosa, that's for you, honey. As we look ahead, I'm excited about the possibilities that lie before us. We are unique in opportunity to shape our future of our community in meaningful ways. Our collective wisdom and diverse perspectives will share community, show commitment to our service, and will guide us through challenges and termite ahead. Let's embrace the journey with open minds, compassionate hearts, and a good sense of humor. After all, laughter is the shortest distance between two people. So if you ever feel overwhelmed, remember, we're in this together. We got this, and we got each other's backs. I want to thank each and every one of you. Vice Mayor, going out Vice Mayor, you've been phenomenal. And Councilmember Chin, okay, you know you're my girl. I love you guys. Take care.
Right, I guess that leaves just me, since I'm the only thing between you and all of the door. I'll try to be as quick as I possibly can here. But it's, you know, funny, I know Vice Mayor Garland talked about how this is the first actual ceremony in person for me in this role, and for a lot of us, since the 2021 got somewhat canceled. Like her, I did that from the table of my home by myself, wearing a full suit, I want to let you know, but with a very bad haircut, because I hadn't left the house in about two weeks. So first of all, I just wanted to thank all the current and former council members, and frankly, a lot of the former council members and staff, because one of the biggest things about taking over a city like this for all of us is this is a city that's been built on a very solid foundation. It's actually very, it's not easy to do the job, but it is much easier with the people before you when it comes to mayors, council members, and staff have all really diligently shepherded the city over the last however many decades. And so I wanted to thank each and every one of them for providing a solid foundation from which me and my colleagues can frankly build upon. So telling a little bit of a quick story about me getting elected in 2008, I was very excited to start. But then I remember in 2012, I was thinking about running for reelection and had the opportunity to talk to Megan Slagaki in the back. Megan was my campaign manager for the 2012 campaign, and I remember at that point, she had run some campaigns, and they hadn't gone exactly the way that she would have liked. And at one point, she said to me, look, I really, at one point, Cory, want to have one campaign where we win big and it's over quickly. And we won very big that night, and it was over within about five minutes. So I wanted to say, but I could not have done it without her friendship and all of her stewardship over that 2012 campaign. I'm so glad that she's here. To Hannah Moulton Belek, who was my campaign manager in 2020, same thing. I was sad that we didn't get the opportunity to do this in person a few years ago due to the pandemic, but I remember talking with her on a rooftop one day at very like a little bar session, just having a conversation, and saying to her, look, I would love for you to run my campaign. And she said, Cory, I've never run a campaign before. And I said, I absolutely have no doubt that you have the skill set and the intelligence and the drive to get the job done. And together, my friend, you and I absolutely made history. So I wanted to say thank you to you as well. And to Janet Hamlin, my campaign manager for 2024, because quite honestly, that conversation started very much the same way. We went out to breakfast one morning, and she thought we were just going to sit down and have a conversation, and I dropped this thing in her lap about, I would love for you to run my campaign. And she said the same thing. I've been involved in campaigns, Cory, but I've never run a campaign and been the number one person. But no one would have ever known that by how exceptionally well you did. I mean, honestly, Janet was my rock during this campaign, and I will tell you quite honestly, I remember some very tough moments in the beginning, back in probably about March of 2023. And she said, Cory, I guarantee you, if you get back out there and start knocking on doors and going into the neighborhoods, you're going to find that there is still a tremendous amount of support for this council and frankly, for the way that the city is being run. And she was right. And if it weren't for her, I might not have gotten the start that I got, but I definitely would not have had the results that we had without her stewardship of the campaign and without her friendship. She has also, like the other women I mentioned, she's become one of my closest friends, and she worked on several other campaigns up here. I don't know when you sleep, but I appreciate the fact that maybe you require very little sleep. But thank you so much for everything. I couldn't have done this without you, and I just have to say thank you, like, forever. To the other folks, I know Shereen Lerner couldn't be here, but she was my campaign chair this time, and she's always been an exceptional friend and support. She's huge on education and historic preservation, and she's done a tremendous amount for this community in so many ways. She's on vacation right now, but I know at some point she'll have a chance to watch this, so I wanted to make sure that I thanked her in public. To Monica Trejo, my campaign chair from the 2020 race, who's also on the Tempe Elementary School District Governing Board, Monica was an incredible chair. She really drove me when I thought that I could never, when I first got that first budget, where they said, hey, Cory, this is the jump from being a council member to running for mayor and what you need to raise. I said, I can't do this. And she said, oh, yes, you can, and I'm going to make sure that you do. And I'm telling you, she absolutely did. She was by my side each and every step of the way. She's been a tremendous friend and a tremendous supporter. I was so honored to have the opportunity to officiate her wedding this last December, and it just shows that the people that you spend time with on campaigns are not just simply folks who are helping you out. They are people who really have the ability to become lifetime lifelong friends, and she is absolutely one of those people. So I wanted to say thank you for always being in my corner. To Phil Amorosi, who's been my treasurer for both of my campaigns as mayor and has been the chair of the Hudson Manor Neighborhood Association probably for at least 25 to 30 years at this point. I don't think anyone could ever be chair of that neighborhood association, quite candidly. But he's done such a great job of really working on an area in this community, along Apache Boulevard, that has been one of our most vastly, kind of rapidly transitioning portions of the city of Tempe, but he does it exceptionally well each and every day, providing residents with information, helping to negotiate development deals, and just really being a champion for this community. And I just really appreciate him standing by my side during my 2020 and 2024 elections. He's also a close friend and confidant, and someone I spend a lot of time with asking his advice. So Phil, thank you again for being here. Really appreciate everything you do. Eric Chalmers as well, for being my consultant on both campaigns. If you want to go back and see a very funny video of me winning in 2020, standing in Councilmember Amber's house, the guy jumping up and down who's way over six feet tall, it's Eric Chalmers, in case you want. But Eric is phenomenal and also became a great friend. He and I had the opportunity to work together for the first time when he was the campaign manager for now Congressman Greg Stanton, and I was his campaign chair back in 2018. And Eric and I developed a very close relationship and bond during that time, and he's been, once again, by my side ever since. And also, probably like Councilmember Keating, on the receiving end of a number of very frantic, panicked calls for me, but he never told me he was bothered either. So I just wanted to say thank you for keeping my confidence and doing an exceptional job. Jesse Avalos from my 2020 campaign and who also helped in this campaign as well. Jesse, I remember when I met him at Arizona State University when he was graduating, and I always tell the story that he and I went to snooze one morning for breakfast, and I thought because he was graduating, he was going to ask me for a letter of recommendation so he could get a job in the outside world. And the first question was, hey, are you still running for mayor? Because I want in. And I'm like, oh, well, I thought this was about you. I was all prepared to write a letter and everything else, but apparently, we're doing some campaign stuff now. But Jesse spearheaded all of the field operations for my 2020 race, and I will tell you, the measure of this guy is back in late June, when it was really getting very hot back in 2019, I said, Jesse, we could probably take the month of July off and just take some time. And he said, I don't want to take some time off, Cory. We're getting great responses from people, so if we can find a driver to take us around, I want to continue well through the month of July. And we did, because he wanted to do it. And frankly, he motivated me to keep going in moments where I might have frankly stopped. But he's just an incredible young man. He's doing wonderful things, and I have a feeling he's probably got elected official life in his future at some point down the line, but we'll talk about that afterwards. So, but thank you for being such a great guy. I appreciate it so much. Joanne Marcus, I know as well for crunching all of the data and making sure that I was knocking on all the right doors and not knocking on every door in the city of Tempe, because it's frankly impossible, but she always made sure that I was in the right places, and she could sort of quietly stood by my side and by Janet's side throughout the entire duration of the campaign. So I wanted to thank you for everything, and thank you so much for being here. To ET for doing all of the work in terms of all the communications, all of the emails, the social media. She was behind all of that, and I wanted to thank her very publicly. She's also on vacation and couldn't be here, but wanted to make sure I thanked her. Franklin Zyrick as well for all the work you did on the campaign, just a very dynamic, incredibly intelligent young man who I know has very bright things in his future, and I'm really glad that he spent some time with me during the course of this campaign, helping me to achieve my dream of still spending another four years as mayor. So Franklin, I wanted to say thank you to you, too. I have to thank Mariana, who's my council aide, because like Councilmember Amber talked about, Mariana, I met when she was still an undergrad student at ASU, and then she worked on my campaign in 2020, and I was fortunate. on my campaign in 2020 and I was fortunate in the last year to be able to hire her to be my aide and she does a tremendous job, but unfortunately, she's under the weather today and really wanted to be here, so she's like, I missed the 2021 and now I'm missing the 2024 one too. But I wanted to tell her, thank you for, you know, doing everything, she did not want to get anyone in the audience sick, so she wanted to let you all know that. But I wanted to thank her for once again, running around with me each and every day. The job of a mayor is pretty insane sometimes, but she does an exceptional job keeping up with me, keeping me prepared and frankly, many times, just being a sounding board when I need someone to talk to at times, when the job can get very, very difficult. To Frida Pollak, and I'm getting close to the end here, I wanted to say to, I don't deserve you as a friend, but thank you for staying by me, my gosh. Every campaign I've been on, she's been with me. I don't know why she puts up with me, but she has and I just have to say thank you to her, it's been nearly 20 years of friendship, but every time I turn around, like if I say, hey, I want to do this or I want to run for this, she's always immediately there to say, hey, hop in, don't ask me to knock on all these doors, but I will drive you wherever you want to go. And she sure did and so I was fortunate that after this last campaign, she got a new car, probably because I wore the previous one out. But thank you for being my friend and for taking care of me all these years, it's just been an incredible ride, so thank you again. To my brother who was here about a week and a half ago, but couldn't be here for this ceremony, I wanted to thank him, my brother is an exceptional guy, I really, it's funny, for having a brother who's two years younger than you, I do model a lot of my own behavior, a lot of my own goals after what Brandon does. I will never be able to live that comment down because he'll be able to go back and watch this tape and see that I said that, but it's true, I mean, he and I have really been through a lot together, but he's another person, just an incredible human being, he's been the best brother a guy could ever have and honestly, I love you and I hope that, you know, I get a chance to see you in a few weeks when I'm back out in DC like I am probably now every couple of months. And to my father for being here this evening, it was really nice that you got to play a role doing a pre-recorded video during the first swearing in ceremony that I had, but it's much better to have you here in person. I will tell you, when I talk about patterning a lot of my life after my brother, I have patterned even more in my life after that guy. And congratulations to Vice Mayor Garland for being here and for everything you do to make the city a great place. I told you that for the first time, we had a chance to sit down and meet that day in South Tempe, when you were thinking about running for council, which I think was supposed to be a 30-minute meeting and we were there for nearly three hours, I knew within the first 10 minutes you were going to win. And you're just, as was talked about before, you're an incredible public servant, you're incredibly prepared and you care about this community deeply and I just, I am so thankful to have you as a colleague and just, you know, congratulations on being reelected, I know we're going to have a great time for the next four years. So congratulations. To Councilmember Keating as well, who I've known when we were actually both a lot younger too, and now you are the senior most member of this council. He's just another person who's absolutely incredible and I love his policy knowledge and so many things and when he gets a hold of an issue, I can tell you, he makes sure to really drive that issue across the finish line. And I will tell you, I have really tried very hard to get good in candidate forums and debates, but I have nothing on Randy Keating. Like the ability he has to command an issue and also find a way to also be funny and light at the same time is something I'm still trying to perfect after all these years, but he's been a great council member and exceptionally deserving of being up here for another third term, so, for a third term. So thank you for being here and congratulations to you as well. And Councilmember Amber, who's been in my corner as well, since I ran for mayor in 2019, 2020, as I mentioned before, my election night party was at her home. She, it's funny that we both ended up here together, I love this, this is fantastic. She's just done so much work in the community, I mean fundraising for nonprofits and other very important groups, working on political campaigns, being a chief of staff and someone who's really worked in a very bipartisan fashion. She's worked, you know, for people on the Democratic side, the Republican side, but that speaks very much just to who she is. She's frankly a person who doesn't care about partisanship, she simply cares about getting the job done. And already, she's calling me and saying things like, hey, did you happen to read the summary judgment that was actually filed? I'm like, how in the world did you, what are you doing? Like, I mean, you're making me look bad up here. But honestly, I'm looking forward to four years of working with you and you continuing to make me look bad by reading things before I have an opportunity to get to them. But you're, I know you're going to be an incredible council member and I'm just very excited for you to be here and congratulations. What I'm just going to say to close this out too, is I just wanted to also thank our city staff. The city staff are frankly the unheralded heroes of the city. To City Manager Rosa Nchostie and the entire team here, you are all incredible and when we parachute in from time to time to do things, you are all here 40, 50, 60 hours a week making sure that the city is exceptionally well-run and I just wanted to say thank you to, and to the entire team here at the city of Tempe for doing such an incredible job. The citizen satisfaction numbers don't lie. This is an incredibly well-run city, the people who live here are incredibly happy and you all do a wonderful job and I just wanted to say thank you to the staff. And just to everyone who opened up their homes, everyone who helped me knock on doors and volunteered for the campaign and obviously, everyone who voted in this past election, I can't thank you enough. This has really been the honor of a lifetime to be up here, serving as the mayor of this incredible city, from my perspective, the greatest city in the entire country. As I said before, we're a city that's been built on a very solid foundation and I cannot wait to work with these six people to continue to make it even better moving forward. So thank you so much to each and every one of you, thank you to all of you for being here and for those watching at home, I'm really excited to be mayor for the next four years and my door is always open to you, so thank you. That being said, the next, now item number nine, adjournment. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled for August 26, 2024. I just want to say before I gather the meeting closed, we just want to invite members of the public who are here this evening to attend a reception for the newly elected mayor and council members of the third floor here at Tempe City Hall. Please know that everyone attending the reception will be escorted through the back by the council assistants. If you don't get escorted through the back, you will have to go through security all over again. So please make sure to follow the council assistants so you can get up the short way and not have to take things out of your pockets. So with that said, I want to thank each and every one of you for joining us, please join us upstairs, we really appreciate it and, ooh, let me see this. I gotta thank the clerks for these. Thank you, this is, these are beautiful and you know, because there's candy in here, I'm going to eat every last bit of this, because you know how I roll, so. With that said, so with that said, thank you so much, everyone, we'll see you upstairs, we are adjourned, thank you.